Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 10th, 2024, Meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is a pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands as one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Canauer.
Canauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Weiser.
Weiser here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Parigno, here.
Okay. We have minutes from the September 26th work session. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Tidings will second. I did have a chance to review it since last meeting.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Doug, you want to go through our tabled items? You know what? Before you do that, I will make a quick announcement. Normally, the way our meetings work, we begin at 6:30, and the public hearing portion of the meeting starts at 7:00. And between 6:30 and 7:00, we go through our tabled items and other work session items. If we finish those work session items prior to 7:00, we'll move directly into the public hearing portion of the meeting. And if those work session items take longer than 30 minutes, which I don't believe they will tonight, we will stop at 7:00 to begin the public hearing. So, Doug?
All right. So, we have one tabled application, 1990 Brand Point Drive, the Walmart expansion. Since the last meeting, we have received a response to the Planning Board's tabling resolution regarding the berm and fence along the backside of Walmart. They did provide a response detailing Walmart's stance on the rights and responsibilities between them and the plaza owner. The plaza owner was the original party to the agreement for the wall and the berm, and so they've provided additional responses and feedback for the board to review.
Okay. Can you also bring up the elevations? Terry, this is yours, right?
Right.
So, they've provided responses to our tabling resolution. Is there any other outstanding items that you see on this?
The only other questions I think I had for them was the, any changes on the exterior of the building? I understand there may be some...
Slight modifications.
Slight modifications to the prior building, and I just wanted to ask if they, if they had some new changes they're going to be doing throughout the area.
So, I believe the most significant change, and if they're in the audience, we can ask them directly, is they're going to be doing some signage in addition to the restriping that they'll be doing on site. If you've been out there, the crosswalks are striped fairly wide. There's not a lot of signage for traffic control, so they'll be adding some traffic control stop bars and reducing the width of the crosswalks to more direct pedestrian activity between the parking lot and the building. They'll also be modifying some of the signage on the building, both for directionality for the pickup, as well as reintroducing some of the Walmart blue that isn't currently present on the building. So, they'll be adding the Walmart blue to a couple of areas, pickup signage, and then the main sign on the front of the building. Currently, there's a large Walmart marquee with a smaller Walmart star.
They're going to make it smaller.
They're going to make the star bigger and the Walmart text smaller over the center.
Okay.
So, I don't have any issues with that. I guess that's all they have, unless somebody else has some issues with it.
Bob, any concerns?
No.
No.
Kelly? Engineering, any?
No, I think everything could be handled in pre-milear status.
Okay. So, we have EAF for this?
Correct.
And are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. Somebody want to make a move?
I'll make the motion to approve the EAF. Tidings?
I'll second.
Okay. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
Then I'll make the motion to approve. Tidings?
I'll second.
Okay. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
All right. The other item we had for the work session was 2025 is, or 2024 is starting to come to a close, so we're looking forward to 2025. Included in your drop was a draft 2025 Planning Board meeting schedule. If you guys are comfortable, you can vote and approve it tonight. If you'd like more time to review it against your calendar, see if there's any conflicts or bad dates. We are looking at every second Thursday and fourth Thursday of the month, minus July, August, November, and December. There's no unusual circumstances in the calendar this year.
Does anybody have any issues at the moment? Do you want more time to take a look?
I don't, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine.
Might as well get it approved, then.
Tidings will make the motion approved.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Looks like that's all we have for our tabled and work session items. So, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, since it's before 7:00 and we're done with our work session items, we will move directly into the public hearing portion of the evening. The way that the process works here is the applicant will come up to one of these two tables they, they can pick and give their presentation on what, what they're proposing. The Planning Board will then ask questions that we have at the time. Once we're done with our questions for the moment, I'll open it up to public participation. And if you would, please, when I call you up, come to the table that's empty, not that the one that the applicants are, are seated at. State your name and address for the record, and then share your comments and concerns. One easy way, or we found it to be a very convenient way, there's slips of paper in those blue, one of those blue bins over by the door on the table. And if you'd like, you can fill your name out and designate which application you want to speak to, and then they'll get handed up to me, and I can call on you that way. If you don't want to do that, that's not a big issue. Just raise your hand when the time comes, and I'll call on you as I, I see you. All right. With that, you know what? Before I let you go more, if you're not here and you want to make a comment, you can dial in by phone at 585-340-8771. And you can also feel free to submit a comment electronically. The Penfield website is www.penfield.org, and there should be a link to this meeting that directs you to how to submit an electronic comment. All right. Now, you can definitely read the first application.
All right. Application number one, IBL Engineering, 5 Lori Lane, Clifton Park, New York, 12065. On behalf of Richard Samuel, request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval for the building of an accessory storage maintenance building at 2480 Browncroft Boulevard, Rochester, New York, 14625. The property is now or formerly owned by Rich Sam Properties, Inc., and Zoned Limited Business, L.B. Application 24P-0022, SBL 123.07-1-21/2480.
I'm Richard Samuel from Rich Sam Properties, and I'm proposing a storage building in the rear of my property. It's 62 by 40, like a metal kit building. It's basically going to be used for just landscape equipment, no removal equipment, tools, that sort of thing. There's no electricity to it, no plumbing to it, virtually a garage, a big garage, I would say. Like a charcoal color. And there are four windows, I think, and one big garage door, a smaller door. It's right at the edge of the parking lot there. I just got a variance for it last month. There's not much more to it, really. Pretty simple.
Okay. Bob, I think this, do you want to start?
Sure. Richard, you said there's no electric?
No.
To the building, so there won't be any exterior lighting?
Correct.
Around the building itself?
Correct.
And the trash for the site, will that remain as it is now, or will there be additional?
No, it'll remain as it is. That, that building shouldn't produce any, any more trash than what we already have.
And I'm trying to get an idea, what from, from the road, how much of this building do you feel we'll actually see?
Very little. The majority, oh, majority of it, I think, is kind of behind, like half of it, at least half of it, I would say, is behind my actual building. And, I mean, the elevation is kind of different. Like, there's two houses there and a garage. I don't, it's kind of like peeking through, kind of.
Okay. So, the, the first floor level or the concrete slab or whatever is actually, you think, a little bit below grade of the existing?
Well, actually, I wouldn't say it's below grade. It's, it's just that there, from the road, there's buildings in the way.
Okay.
Like, there's, there's the two houses and the garage, and then the office building. Like, driving by, you wouldn't see it.
Okay.
Like, you're like, I mean, like, hopping and peeking through. Like, there's no way you're going to see it at a glance. If you're on a walk.
For rain, snow that melts off that roof, how will that be handled?
Well, on the side closer to Browncroft, there's gutters that go right to the parking lot, and there's a storm drain right there.
So, it'll pick up the storm drain?
Yeah.
In the parking lot?
Other side will just go into the grass, but, I mean, that's a huge, huge lot.
Okay. Okay. I know there was a note, engineering had noted that there's still a number of items that we need more detail on it. So, I think that's been conveyed to the applicant.
Yeah, we, we sent a PRC memo, and I think we got new materials, but we haven't got responses to the comments yet.
Okay.
At least, I haven't seen any.
Okay. Have you had a chance to review that, Richard?
Yeah, I thought he, I thought he responded to everything.
Okay.
Not when he, he sent me a new, a new drawing, I thought it had responded to everything in the drawing.
Yeah, well, we got the drawing on Wednesday, so I've had a small chance to review it, but there was no written responses to the comments, so I don't know if everything was addressed or not.
Okay. So, I guess we're still waiting on, you'd have to work with engineering on the...
I mean, I did, and he said he, I mean, that was his response to, he said he put everything in the drawing, he sent it to me, and I sent it to the town, and I didn't hear anything back.
Okay. If that was this week, maybe it hasn't worked its way.
Well, I only got an email Friday.
Okay.
About all this. So, then, I didn't really respond to my, with my engineers on Monday. I wasn't even in town on Friday, and then it took him a day to turn it around.
Okay.
If there's specific questions I can answer, I'd be more than happy to.
Well, I think, you know, you can work that out with the engineering department, the outstanding, yeah.
One of the things I think we're, I know that I'm, I'm struggling with is the, what has been submitted as the site plan isn't, isn't what we typically see. Typically, there's some, there's more detail. So, as an example, this, I believe, is the site plan.
Okay.
And there's, I'm going to call it a vague representation of where the, the office building is and the driveway, and speaking, I'm going to potentially go out on a limb and, and speak for the engineering department and suggest that a more detailed plan would be more suitable and very helpful in helping us determine exactly where it's going to go, elevations of various things.
I'll be kind of frank, I guess. I've struggled with this guy that I've hired, and like, the first drawing he sent was even worse than this, and I sent it to you guys. I'm just being honest. And he's like, I'm like, well, because I can read what you guys require, I'm not an engineer, and I'm like, well, there's things kind of not in here. He's like, well, just wait for their comments. And you did get comments, and he kind of addressed what you guys said, but it's almost like, I mean, he's a professional engineer, he should really kind of know more and do more, I guess, without being directed to do it, I would think. And so, I apologize. I'm just being honest, but...
Okay. So, the, I know I, I don't know if I can speak for everyone on the board, but I know I'd be more comfortable, I mean, it, overall, in concept?
Yeah.
No issue with what you're looking to do?
Right.
But there are certain things that the town, I'm going to say, requires that don't seem to be on here or as submitted. So, we'll, I'm going to say most likely, we'll put a tabling resolution together and ask for some of that stuff.
Okay.
And I just got a couple of questions. Food for thought, too, why you're going to be doing this work for us. My question, what have you been using for storage in the past?
Closets.
I'm sorry?
Closets, garages, there's a tiny little shed there, stuff spilling out all over the place, kind of a mess. That's why we're doing this.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there any, these metal buildings, you're going to have constructed, or you're going to do it?
It's a kit, so it's, um, yeah, I won't do it myself.
Yeah. Is there any similar structures like that in the area?
Uh, like, not in the immediate area, I don't think, no.
How will you see inside? Is there translucent panels on the roof, or?
There's windows.
Just the...
There's four windows. Should be a back, on the backside, two windows. Hopefully, he provided that.
We have a front, we have a front elevation that has a door and a, I don't know if that's an overhead door or a swing-out type door? Is that like a garage door?
Garage door, yeah.
And then, what looks like there's a side elevation, I'm not sure if that's the west or the east elevation, but would the window be toward the south side of the building, or is it?
That is the front side of, so towards, that'd be the side where the doors are. But in the back of the building, there's two windows, which I don't even see there, to be honest with you.
So, there's, there's two windows on the...
Rear elevation.
Which would be the north side.
Uh, let's see here.
So, Browncroft is to the south of your building, so this is proposed to be...
If I say rear, I mean to the, that side.
To the, so if I'm look...
To the east. Two, two windows in the east, and then one in the north and one in the south. And the west has the garage door.
So, so wait a minute. Which way, which direction, which direction is the front?
Front's on the east. Does he have it backwards?
So, the front would face, let's say, Creek Street?
Yeah.
Would be toward Creek Street?
No. The front of the building, when you say the front of the building, you mean where the garage doors are, correct?
Well, on the elevation that, on the drawing that was submitted, there's one that says front elevation, that has the overhead door and the, and the man door, and then there's a side elevation, and it has a window on the right-hand side.
Originally, the building was going the other direction. I think that's why it says front elevation, but the neighbor, one neighbor didn't really want it that close to her property, and so we turned it. So, that's not, that's, the front elevation is the west.
The west?
Yep.
So, it would face down into the valley, like, away from Creek Street?
Correct it, but it's not a valley, it's just flat land.
I'm just getting a macro view of... So, then, the, the Browncroft Boulevard view, assuming you could see it, would be the side elevation?
Yeah.
Okay. If we, if we could have that all put?
Yes.
On a drawing?
Yeah, I could do that.
It'd be very helpful.
Yeah.
And what about the size? Is that the only size you can work with, or where'd you come up with the size?
Well, I already, to be honest, we already purchased the building. So, I mean, this whole thing's been a complete mess. Originally, when we went down to the town of Penfield, they told me I did not need a variance for this, and that I could just do whatever, pretty much. Clearly, whoever I spoke with misunderstood me, so I ended up buying this kit, and so this kit, I already have. But the size is useful for me. I mean, it's definitely, would be very useful.
Yeah. Not, we're just trying to go through the motions that we need to go through on this. Like I mentioned before, I mean, don't really have an issue with the overall...
Right.
Thing, but we do, we need to know orientation, where it's going to go, and, and all that.
Yep.
Do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, you mentioned, so now, the stuff you're going to store in this is for this property or for all your other properties that you may own, or?
Mostly that property. There is some other properties in the area I own, and...
You just, you want to store all the stuff there?
Yeah.
Because, what is it, like, Canauer's back, there's like a lot of steel girders or something back there, laying it a lot?
That's the building.
So, that's for that building?
That is that building.
That's the building.
Huh? Oh, that's for this building?
No, it is the building.
It is the building.
Oh, it is the building?
He already bought the building, all the stuff to build the building, and that's what that is.
All right.
This has been a complete disaster.
All right.
Any other questions from the board at the moment? Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this application? Again, you can call in, 340-8771, or submit an electronic comment, go in once, go in twice. Thank you very much for your presentation. We will, we will get a tabling resolution.
Okay.
That you can forward on to your engineer, and...
Sure.
They can hopefully provide the info that we're requesting.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Doug, item two?
All right. Application number two, BME Associates, 10 Leftbridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Willow Pond Ventures, LLC, request under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary site plan approval for the building of two apartment buildings with 44 units each to be located, 44 units each to be located at 47 Willow Pond Way. The property is now or formerly owned by Willow Pond Ventures, LLC, and Zoned Plan Development District, PD. Application 24P-0023, SBL 139.08-2-1.21.
One quick thing for those in attendance and watching on this application. This happens to be in a planned development district. As such, the, the Planning Board has certain responsibilities, and the Town Board has other responsibilities. The Planning Board is here to look at site plan issues, configuration of buildings, setbacks, parking, things like that. Use issues are, will be decided by the Town Board, so we don't have any jurisdiction over the actual use of the space. Should that be an accurate statement?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. Just want everyone to know what our, I guess it'd be separation of powers?
Yes.
Right?
One way to put it.
Easy jurisdiction.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Chris Nadler from Mark IV, the developer. With me here is Peter Vars from BME Associates, and Mike Bogajewski, also from BME, is also here with us, as is David Cruz, our traffic engineer who prepared the traffic report that you have, as well as Chris DiMarzo, the president of Mark IV and the owner of the property. Tonight, we'd like to go over the planned development district process briefly, go over the materials that we've submitted with our application, and I'll turn it over to Peter to review the site plan and go over the technical details, and then the entire team will be available for any questions you have. As you know, can I just, can everybody hear? I can talk a lot louder.
I can have Wesley boost it.
Yeah, Wes, can you increase the volume in the, in the auditorium, please, for microphones? I'm, I think I'm going deaf, so...
I think we all are.
I'm having a little bit of a hard time, so I'm imagining everybody else's, too, so putting my deafness on everyone else.
Imputed, imputed deafness.
I think that's, yeah, that's, is that better?
Sounds good.
Good. All right.
So, as you know, in 2002, the town issued a planned development district approval for this parcel and the parcel immediately to the east, or two office buildings that currently exist there, as well as 150-unit assisted living facility. The town has made it clear that we have, still have that approval and could build the 150-unit assisted living facility today. Due to market conditions and changing desires of ownership, we're proposing the multifamily apartment complex that you have a preliminary site plan application for. We've met with town staff, we had sketch plan review on multiple dates with this board. This board held a public hearing in July, where many neighbors voiced concerns. We went, we presented our ideas and concept plan to the Town Board. We had the opportunity to meet with our immediately adjacent neighbors along our southern property, property line, and got some good ideas from them and made some modifications that Peter will go over, made some modifications to the plan. We're here today for preliminary site plan approval, and then, once we get preliminary site plan approval, like you said, we'll go to the Town Board for a special use permit, and then come back to this board for final site plan approval. As I said, we'd like to go over the materials that we've submitted. There's a letter of intent with the specific site plan factors for consideration completed that I think gives a lot of good justifications for this project and explains a lot of the details. There's detailed site plans provided, including, at this board's request, a detailed landscaping plan with extensive buffering and a lighting plan showing the specific light fixtures that will be used, that the project will be dark sky compliant, and that there will be no light spillage onto adjacent properties. We've provided elevations showing all four sides of the buildings, including all materials and colors that will be used, cross-sections that show what will be visible from... cross-sections that show what will be visible from neighboring properties. We've provided a building height comparison exhibit, BME's engineering report, Passaro's traffic impact report. You also have in front of you the PRC comments that were issued, I think, last week. And you yourselves issued a planning board sketch plan review letter. BME submitted multiple versions of comment responses, one on August 21st, one on September 25th, and prepared a memorandum related to the PD District objectives compliance, also dated September 25th. We've put together as comprehensive an application as we can. I think there's a lot of details, a lot of justifications. And the traffic report and BME's engineering report, I think, covers every possible concern. What we're asking for tonight is that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency for seeker, and commence the coordinated review process. And we'll do that after Peter's had a chance to go over the technical details.
Good evening. My name is Peter Vars with BME Associates. As Chris mentioned, what I will do is I will present to you the preliminary site plan that's been prepared and been submitted for the proposed apartments located at 47 Willow Pond Way. The proposal calls for two three-story apartment buildings containing 44 units each. So, that's a total of 88 units on a 4.5-acre lot. The 4.5-acre lot proposed for this project is the, actually, it's the last lot within, to be developed, within the overall Willow Pond Plan Development District. This lot was approved, as Chris Nadler mentioned, back in 2002, for development as a multiple residential use, consisting, multiple residential use within the PD, and it was approved as a 150-unit, 88,000-square-foot senior care facility. The current proposal remains as a multiple residential use, but as, within the PD, but as Chris mentioned, Chris Nadler mentioned, it's now proposed as a market rate apartment project that will consist of one and two-bedroom units within the two buildings that are proposed. The property is currently vacant, and is characterized with just ground cover and successional growth vegetation, given that the site was prepped for development back in 2003, when the office building at 43 Willow Pond Way to the east of this site was constructed. The lot itself occupies approximately 475 feet of frontage along Route 441, and it also has 160 feet of frontage along Willow Pond Way. The site slopes north to south, and that is the primary drainage pattern on this property, where the stormwater runoff currently enters the Willow Pond Way storm sewer system. The proposed site plan that's been prepared, has been prepared to comply with the lot standards that were established in the Willow Pond Plan Development District, and established with the previous approval for this lot back in 2002. But this proposed plan actually reflects certain improvements over that currently approved 150-unit site plan, such as the reduction in the number of units from 150 to 88 units. It does result in a reduction in lot coverage by about 5% over what was previously approved. And it does result in a reduction in building lot coverage by about 9,600 square feet. The current approved plan has 45,750 square feet of building coverage. This proposed plan reflects 36,150 square feet of building lot coverage. So, as I mentioned, we're seeing a 20% reduction in the building footprint area with this current proposal. This plan also results in larger setbacks, especially to the west and south property lines from the current approved site plan. The setback to the west property line was increased from, is currently approved at 48 feet. The proposal calls for the apartments, buildings to be set back approximately 90 feet from that west property line. And then, the setback to the south was increased from 50 feet, as currently approved, to 57 feet, which is proposed on, on the site plan before you. Basically, what we're proposing is a more compact development that's brought into the center of the property. The site plan layout that you see before you proposes its primary access from Willow Pond Way, which has always been the plan for this 4.5-acre site. This primary access onto Willow Pond Way will provide access to 441, both via Willow Pond Way to the east and Sanders Farm Drive to the west. It also will provide access out to Route 250 via New Wickham Way through the Willow Pond Way development. A secondary access will be provided to the property through a cross-access at the northeast corner of the property with the connection to 43 Willow Pond Way. That was one of the comments we received during the sketch plan review from PRC, that there would be a second means in, to this property, emergency vehicles, or to be used by emergency vehicles or other users. So, that has been provided on this preliminary site plan. As Chris Nadler mentioned, a traffic study has been prepared for this proposed development. It has been submitted to the town of Penfield and to the New York State Department of Transportation for their review. The scope of that study was established through consultation with the town of Penfield and the New York State DOT. It was in their opinion, and we follow their guidance on this, was that five intersections would be analyzed. Those intersections would be the intersections of Route 441 with Sanders Farms Drive, 441 and Willow Pond Way, Route 250 and New Wickham Drive, and then also two internal intersections. The intersection of Willow Pond Way and Crown Oak Drive immediately to the east of our site. And also then further to the south and to the east, the intersection of Devonshire Circle and Courtshire Lane. The, the traffic study looked at both the AM and the PM weekday peak hours, and analyzed the projected trip generations from this development as it relates to current traffic volumes, but also projected traffic volumes, background volumes based on other planned or proposed developments in the region. Not to go into any great detail of that study, you have it before you, but what the study found was that all, all of the studied intersections, which were the key intersections to be analyzed by, determined by the town and the state, would operate at acceptable levels of service during both peak hours with no degradation beyond current levels of service. It also acknowledged that the projected trip generations from this project at peak hours would only result in single-digit trip increases from what was approved with the previous 150-unit facility. So, we're only seeing single-digit increase in trip generation over what's been previously approved. The traffic report goes on to state and summarizes that the existing highway network, 441, 250, along with those interior streets and intersections, can accommodate the new project-related traffic. In addition to the vehicular transportation, we've also taken into account pedestrian circulation. The proposed site plan includes an extensive pedestrian system. There are sidewalks proposed throughout the property itself, but also there will be sidewalk extended along the access drive to provide pedestrian access out to Willow Pond Way. And then also, the developer will install sidewalk along its 160 feet of frontage along Willow Pond Way, connecting to the existing sidewalk that terminate, currently terminates at its east property line at 43 Willow Pond Way. What this will do, it extends that sidewalk system another 160 feet west into Willow Pond, but it also provides the residents here with pedestrian access along Willow Pond Way and Crown Point, all the way to the Wegmans Plaza, if you're familiar with, of that existing pedestrian network. The site plan also includes provisions for bicycle racks for each building. Parking on this site is provided to meet the town code requirement of two spaces per unit. Provisions are made to provide 176 parking spaces on this property. Those spaces will be provided as follows. There will be 88 surface spaces. There will be 44 covered spaces, which equates to 25% of the total parking, and that is as required by the town code. The 44 covered parking spaces are provided in two ways. First of all, there will be 10 spaces provided with, in each building at its north and south ends. And then, there will be four standalone garages at six spaces each. So, there's 20 spaces with the buildings, and then 24 spaces in the garages. And then finally, we are proposing 44 land bank parking spaces on the property, based on the fact of the applicant's operational experience, and the fact that they manage thousands of apartment units in multiple complexes throughout the region, and they have come to find that a 1.5 parking space per unit typically works in their communities. But in order to comply with the code, we are showing those spaces land banked such that if the, if the demand does pick up, they can provide those spaces. So, we are proposing to install 132 surf spaces at this time in land bank the remaining 44. This parking layout does include six ADA spaces as required, and also four EV spaces. There will be two EV spaces dedicated to each building. The buildings that are proposed, as we mentioned, are three-story buildings, and they'll, and be up to 40 feet in height. The applicant is desiring the three-story height in order for efficiency in its construction, and it allows for a more compact site plan design and, and development pattern. But it's important to understand, the entire building itself is not at the 40-foot height. The entire rear elevation of the building does not exceed the 35-foot height. The front elevation, which you can see on the screen here, has portions that do go up to 40 feet. Basically, about just over one-third, 37% of the building facade is at a 40-foot height, and the rest of the building is 35 feet or lower. Did you have a?
Can I, I don't usually interrupt, but the, what are you considering the front elevation?
Go back to the
So, if you look at the
Yeah.
Site plan, which is the front?
The front is
Facing the courtyard, or?
Yes. No, no, I'm sorry. That's the, those are the rear elevations, the outer walls, so to speak.
Outer walls are the, considered the front. So, the west of the west building, and the east of the east building?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
No problem.
Continue.
Oh, go ahead.
No.
Oh, okay. So, what this exhibit illustrates is what a two-story, well, what you see rendered is the architectural elevation of the building as proposed. The red dashed line represents what a two-story building at 35 feet of, of a similar design would look like. So, the point being to illustrate that the massing of the building at the 35-foot height is really 90, 95% of the facade that's proposed. Could we then go to the, that site plan that's right there, please? Yes, thank you. So, what we did is we also provided to you a plan that was prepared to comply with the 35-foot, two-story PD zoning requirement. What this proposes is the same 88 units, but it does it in three two-story buildings. Basically, taking the third story off the two buildings, combining them to create a third building. This plan has been prepared. It complies with all of the same setback criteria that was established with the PD zone. It does provide the 88 units. It's two-story buildings, 35 feet in height. However, what this plan does, first of all, it reduces the setbacks that, that would be provided to the properties to the west and the south. This plan meets the minimum setback requirements. In other words, the setback to the west property line on this plan is at 48 feet versus what we're requesting and proposing at 57 feet. The setback to the south would be, is at 40 feet, where we are looking at setbacks of 57 to 69 feet on that, on the proposal. Also, if you look on this plan, you'll notice the parking along that south property line comes to within 10 feet of the property line. And when we get talking about the landscape buffer with the plan we're proposing, we're able to provide a 30-foot, minimum 30-foot wide buffering area. And I'll talk about that in a few moments when I get to the landscaping. This plan provides the minimum green space requirement of 20%. The proposed plan we're looking at has green space close to 40%, so it's almost double. This building coverage represents, for building and garages, because of the 25% coverage requirement, has a building lot coverage of 30%. And as I had previously mentioned, the proposed plan provides building lot coverage at 22%. This plan represents impervious area of around 78%, 3.5 acres of the 4.5-acre site. The plan we're proposing provides impervious at around 62% of 2.8 cover, so really a 20% reduction in impervious cover. So, what, what does all this do? It basically is, is showing that what the applicant is proposing to do is to go up versus to go out. And we believe that by doing this, we end up with a plan that has less impact on the site, on the surroundings, on the environment, because of the fact of we're able to reduce or provide larger setbacks, reduce impervious cover, reduce building lot coverage, things like that. If we could then bring up the cross-sections, please. But we understand that obviously the proposal go to three stories in lieu of two stories. You know, what, what does that look like? So, we did provide cross-sections to illustrate what you see here. And what these cross-sections illustrate is the red line is the proposed building, and the blue line is what a 30-foot, 5-foot, two-story building would be. Basically, what we believe this shows is that the additional five foot of height that's being requested for portions of this, of the two buildings is a fair or good trade-off to allow for increased setbacks, reduced impervious cover, and larger buffers to the, to the perimeter. I'd like to now speak a little bit about the buffer, so if we can go back to the rendering, please. As we mentioned, we were able to provide a minimum 30-foot buffer along that south property line. We understood this to be an important component of this plan through both, through the sketch plan review and the PRC review. This buffer not only being 30 feet deep and removing any and all parking along that area, such that we don't have headlight encroachment or anything of that sort shining towards the south. But in addition to the landscaping, the applicant is proposing to construct 180 lineal feet, a six-foot-tall, a board-on-board fence. And that will run along completely, basically, it follows the rendered tree line that you see there, the proposed landscaping. It's gonna work in concert with that, that landscaping. Beyond the fence, there will, we're proposing 26 deciduous and conifer trees, primarily white pine and spruce trees, but also red oak trees. The 26 at 180 feet, basically, those trees are gonna be planted six feet on center, and staggered such that they have the ability to grow and fill in each other. Really, anything closer to that than the trees really start affecting their ability to grow into each other. As Mr. Nadler mentioned, the site lighting is proposed to be LED lighting, dark sky compliant, with a 16-foot-high pole height. And as, and we did provide the lighting plan and the lighting candles to show that there would be no light spillage off of the property. From a technical side, the project does include a comprehensive stormwater management plan. While the Willow Pond drainage system has been, in theory, and was constructed to receive the post-development runoff from this project site, the fact of the matter is, given that was back in 2000, we have some more current regulations we have to abide by. So, what this plan reflects is basically bringing that drainage design current to 2024 standards. So, there will be a stormwater management facility located in the, I guess, the south, southern portion of the property along the entranceway. This facility has been designed and sized in compliance with the town of Penfield's stormwater regulations and the New York State DEC regulations. It will contain the runoff from It will contain the runoff from the site. All the site runoff will be directed to this facility and will be treated for water quality purposes and also to attenuate the stormwater flows. And then it will connect directly into the Willow Pond Way storm su, storm system and then find its way eastward. This drainage plan also includes a couple of drainage structures along the south property line, such that water that is draining north to south today will be intercepted and picked up and conveyed. We've been made aware that some of that area can get low and wet, and it is our intent to drain that to provide relief to the properties to the south. The property will be served by public water through a connection to the Monroe County Water Authority system along New York State Route 441, and it will connect to the town of Penfield's sanitary sewer system. The sanitary sewer is onsite as it was extended from forty-three Willow Pond Way. We did provide with our application a complete engineer's report that provides all of the detail on, on these features and on the site plan design for the town staff's review. We also did prepare the environmental assessment form, part one, for your review, because one of the things we will be asking of the planning board is that you would declare your intent to be lead agency for the seeker process to conduct the seeker review. And if that is something we could hopefully complete tonight, at least that administrative task of designating the board to be lead agency. We did receive the PRC comments. We have reviewed those with the applicant, and we do not anticipate any issue in being able to address them. We will provide written responses to those so that the PRC has an opportunity to receive them, to review them prior to the next workshop meeting. We do understand that this plan, and we await review from the town's traffic consultant. We understand they have the traffic study, the town's landscape consultant, and also the town's architectural consultant. And once we receive those comments, obviously we'll respond to those. So that wraps up everything I wanted to cover. We wanted to cover concerning the site plan, the preliminary site plan, and we can answer any questions that you wish at this time.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I just have a few questions to start. You'd mentioned there's some existing drainage issues at the southern property line?
Mm-hmm.
Can you go into that a little bit more and how those are proposed to be addressed?
So, right now, in the southwest corner, there's an existing storm structure, a storm inlet that ties into the Willow Pond system drains to the west.
Southwest corner by the street or?
Yeah, no.
Behind the whole southwest corner?
There we go. Nope, go left. Go, there it is. If you see right there, yeah, there's an existing storm structure there and storm sewer that goes west. We've really reduced the runoff that comes to that, because we're going to collect that in our proposed storm sewer system, as you see in the driveways, and convey that easterly into our stormwater facility. So we're basically intercepting that runoff. That inlet's really only going to drain whatever is in that little pocket. More importantly, right in the middle of your screen, there's a storm sewer that's kind of pointing at the south property line. That's a, a storm sewer system to collect that runoff that kind of now sits in that southern area and tie it into the proposed storm sewer system you see along the roadway and convey it to the stormwater management facility. So that's what our plan is, is to do there.
Okay. Then, can you speak to the nature of the stormwater facility? Will it be a retention pond, a detention pond? Is it more of a rain garden? What, what's?
It, it's the latter. It's more because of all of the existing drainage facilities that are in Willow Pond today, that a lot of the volume controls are accounted for. So really, what this facility is going to be is more about water quality treatment, basically filtering the water. So it really, like I said, it's more the latter. It's really more of a large rain garden in the fact that it will not be your typical stormwater pond that will have.
Standing water.
A water pool elevation. Correct. Okay?
Okay. Speak to the lighting a little bit. I understand that dark sky luminaires and so forth propose to have timers, dimmers after a certain time, sensors maybe for, you know, three AM, lights go dark, car comes in, they brighten up.
Um, I'll be honest with you, AJ, we haven't discussed that, but I.
We, I don't think we've thought of it yet.
Yeah.
But that's a good idea, and we'll absolutely explore that. Obviously, you need lights in parking lots for safety reasons, but maybe there's a workaround with a timer like.
Yeah, the one thing with LED technology is it provides for a lot more controllability.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I think that, and we should take advantage of that from the standpoint, because it's also an advantage, that's kind of an odd word, it's an improvement over what's been approved or what is approved out there, because the senior facility would have, you know, twenty-four-hour operation, staff changes, you know what? In other words, those lights would have been on twenty-four, or when I say twenty, dawn, dusk to dawn every day because of having shift changes at midnight and six AM types of things. So we should, we could have the potential to see an improvement on potential lighting effects. So I do think that's something.
Yes. Also, color temperature proposed? Is that something that, do you have a correlated color temperature proposed for the lights or?
Oh.
Or open to suggestion?
I think we're open to suggestion. I, I don't think our tenants want, you know, the harsh white, bright white glow any more than our neighbors do.
So it'd be a lower color temperature than like a?
Yeah, we, we want.
Three thousand, three thousand five hundred, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any variances required that you anticipate?
Um, the, at this time, no. We do need to address the garage setbacks to the east property line, but we are going to be able to modify the site. We basically have to shift them in five feet, and then we'll be in complete compliance.
Can you speak a little bit more? I think there, there may be a lot of people wondering why, you know, there's the nursing home that was already approved. Why not just do that?
Our market has changed. I don't, we don't, we're not in the nursing home business anymore. The DeMarzos and Mark IV developed a lot of legacy senior living facilities and nursing homes. They're not in that business anymore. There's a need for multi-family housing throughout the county and in, especially in the town of Penfield, and that's what makes the most sense for this, this site.
The traffic study, you mentioned that single-digit increases over what was found in the original traffic study for the nursing home. And this would be peak time, so let's say, what, seven, eight in the morning, leaving the site, going out onto whether it's Sanders Farm or Willow Pond Way. You're talking about an increase of two or nine?
Okay.
Or?
To Sanders, to Sanders Farm, it was an increase of four trips or, no, it was one trip and three trips. Actually, you know what I'm going to do, AJ? I'm going to defer this to David Cruzy, the traffic engineer, because he knows these numbers off the top of his head.
Okay.
So if you want to go, do all traffic now.
I think it'd be helpful to have a better idea of what the anticipation is and maybe what the current state is and when they were done.
Yep.
You know, was it done on a super busy time, quiet time? People probably want to know those things.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is David Cruzy. I'm a senior transportation planner with Passaro Associates. I've been doing this for almost fifteen years now. Our transportation group has collectively over thirty years of experience doing traffic work for both private clients and municipal clients. We've also worked heavily in the town of Penfield over the years as my former firm, SRF Associates. We go back to town, town-wide traffic monitoring days for the town of Penfield. So just wanted to qualify some of the work that we've done. As Peter stated earlier, this traffic study was performed in accordance with town and state scoping, as well as the, the town, the state, and regard, despite the fact that there's no county roads being affected, also with, in accordance with their guidance and standards as well. As it relates to the traffic studying and just sort of quickly hitting some of the high points, traffic counts were taken at the five intersections identified earlier during those typical commuter peak times of the, the morning and evening. That is the seven to nine peak period and the four to six peak period, very standard for these types of, for these types of uses that are going in. We look at the peak hours, so we take that two-hour window. We, we boil it down to what is the peak hour generated at, at each intersection. And so we've got a, sort of a worst-case scenario at each of these intersections. We took counts in early September while schools were in session, while everything was back to normal, per se, with regards to local schools, colleges, what have you. There were no significant weather issues going on that day. It was taken during the standard Tuesday through Thursday time period there. It was taken, I believe, on a Tuesday at, like I said, the, the intersection studied. In terms of the traffic generation, we use the standard methodology, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is what most, most boards, most municipalities and state and local agencies use to develop traffic generations for, for new projects. We referenced that for both the, the proposed action, which is the eighty-eight apartment units, as well as looking at what the hundred-and-fifty, hundred-and-fifty-bed senior assisted living, assisted living facility would look, would look like. It's referenced in the traffic study, but just to note for everybody's benefit, if, if, when you are reviewing, it's table eight in the traffic study. That is a trip generation comparison between the proposed action as well as the approved use. And as, as was stated, there are increases with the, with the proposed action in terms of peak hour trip generation. We're not denying that. However, we understand too that there, especially as we were working through the scoping phase, that there was some, there were concerns from the neighborhood residents about traffic distribution and trip assignments for vehicles exiting out Sanders Farms Drive and basically from and to the west of the project. That's where Peter was, was referencing where the single-digit increases come from. So when we look a little further, the, the next table in the traffic study, that's where we look at what we are projecting for, for traffic to use that route versus going out to Willow Pond Way. Now, I just wanted to take a step back real quick and just say that it is well-known, not only for what we, we do on a daily basis as drivers on the roadway, on the public roadway, but also within engineering circles and, and just standard practice that traffic signals such as the one at 441 and Willow Pond Way, they generally tend to attract a good deal of traffic, generally more, more traffic than, than you would otherwise, especially when you compare it to an unsignaled location or uncontrolled location like you have at Sanders Farms Drive. That's not to say that there's, there's not existing drivers today. We counted nineteen drivers making a left out of there during the AM peak hour.
Out of Sanders Farm?
Out of Sanders Farm, and another twelve during the PM peak hour. So that's not to say that you can't make the, the left out. However, it is a much more guaranteed left out of the whole neighborhood to travel west if you were to go to the traffic signal. So just, just as we're thinking about where traffic is going to, to where it's going to leave and travel to in order to perhaps go down to 490 and parts west, we, we know from the traffic counts we've done at both intersections there that most traffic is going to go to the signal rather than, than try to wait for, for available gaps at Sanders Farms Drive. So when we, now just to, to go back to the, the change in trips between the assisted living and the, the proposed action, that's where we are seeing a, a small increase in traffic when compared to the assisted living using the, the proposed action trips. And that's where we see the, the, the change in approximately one car, maybe two in the morning, and plus or minus three in the evening. So that's where that, that change in trips comes from. In terms of actual capacity changes, although the report does project some minor increases in delay, there are no changes in levels of service. These intersections out there today can handle, there is capacity at these intersections to handle those, those traffic loads that will be generated by this project. And as was mentioned, we also did look at and understand that there's the potential for motorists and drivers to potentially travel through the neighborhood to exit out to 250 via New Wickham. We do project some levels of traffic to do that, and the, the traffic report does state that. And again, the, the, the intersections themselves, roadways themselves can handle those traffic, those, those traffic loads and those small impacts. But it is important to point out, as, as was mentioned earlier, I believe Chris mentioned it, that when compared to an assisted living facility, this facility will, will generally be more of, of sort of a daytime use. That's not to say that people don't certainly get up and go out at, at two in the morning, three in the morning or so. I've certainly done that, you know, especially when I'm raising young kids, having to get something last minute. But when compared to an assisted living facility, there is the, the expectation that there will be perhaps more nighttime use, a twenty-four-hour operation use, rather than a neighborhood which wakes up in the morning, maybe shifts around in the afternoon, and then ultimately, you know, settles down in the evenings.
So what you, if, am I correct in understanding you as saying with the, the approved use of the nursing home, that potentially would be more of a twenty-four-hour use, traffic coming and going, and this is anticipated to be more, let's call it, traditional residential use?
Correct. More, more of the same, that's, that's what's out there today.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
About the traffic or about?
About anything.
Well, I do have some questions about the additional exit and entrance you have in the back, connected to the business park.
Yes.
So was, was that for emergency vehicles only, or you had just made a mention about emergency access?
The, it will not be gated or anything, so it will be available for use by, by the tenants and the residents. The reason I referenced the emergency access because the, the genesis of the comment came from the, the emergency service providers, that they were looking for another means of access to the facility such that if the primary access of Willow Pond Way weren't, you know, to be blocked or anything. So it was in response to that, but the fact that the owner owns the adjacent office building, they'll put the reciprocal easement agreement in place, but it'll be allowed for use by anyone.
So they could park their residence hypothetically if they needed to or?
That, that's correct. They could park there. I don't see that they would. We've got way more parking than is absolutely necessary onsite, and it'd be a little bit of a hike to, to get into the office park. That being said, there's not a day that goes by with that, the office park's parking lot anywhere near full. The, the space is right by the building, are, are generally filled up, but the further wa, further out spots really don't get filled. So there's, there's adequate spots there if somebody wanted to park there.
Chris, speaking of the, you, you mentioned just now about the proposed parking and the amount of land bank. You, you mentioned that there's, I think you said there's way more proposed than necessary. What has been the experience with developments, projects like this in other areas that are similar? What has been found in terms of parking ratios to units that's really actually needed?
What, what we need and what we, what gets used on most of our facilities, about 1.2 per unit, 1.2 spots. On this site, we, you know, erred on the side of caution to comply as much as possible with the town's requirements, but I'd be surprised if these all got filled up.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just to build upon that, we worked with, the 1.2 ratio they have is based on their current operations. In other words, that's what they're-
That's what I was asking.
Yes. They, that's what they did. They went through their communities that they're operating throughout the area and said, "How many units do we have? How many spaces are we providing?" And it factored out to about 1.2. But the other thing on top of that, we also-
Well, the question wasn't really what are provided, it's really what's used, so, on a regular basis.
And that's what it's based upon, but, because the other thing I was going to add to that, because then also if you go to the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, parking, they have a parking manual also. That's what they are recommending also for multiple residential apartments, is that 1.2 to 1.3 is the ratio that people are seeing is what is used.
So are, we have onsite property managers at all of our properties, and we will on this one too. And they went out and said, "How many are we using?" We provide more on a lot of our projects because of, you know, municipal regulations, but they said, "How many are we using on a daily, weekly, monthly basis?" And we have, you know, a tenant signs a lease and we get their vehicle information, their license plate, make and model, so the cars don't get towed. So they use that and compiled what we actually use, and it's about 1.2 spaces per unit.
Is there any designated visitor parking?
Here, there's not designated visitor versus-
Resident.
Resident, other than the garage spaces. And we don't have that at other, other properties, except one downtown. We have, I think, 10 visitor spaces.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay. I'm good.
I just got, I was against several of those questions you answered already, but the materials used on these buildings or your plan, are they used in any other properties you guys own in the area or adjacent towns or anything?
Uh, no, we don't have a building like this up at the time, at this time. It'd be similar to Highland Grove at 625 South Goodman. If you're going in downtown on Route 490, the orange and red building, we're not proposing orange and red here. It's more of a thing for an urban setting. But I think the materials, that would give you something similar, but this has a lot of different materials and they're all scoped right there.
Okay, and that's similar to downtown or anything else? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Bob, any questions?
Yeah. I had a few questions. The, the height for the 40-foot, you mentioned that that's due to basically a five-foot parapet for-
It's, it's mostly parapet, yes.
Mostly parapet. And there's, I would assume on the rest of the building, there's some parapet height.
You know, I'm probably not the right person to answer that question, not being the architect, but I, I don't know those exact dimensions.
And I would assume any roof units then would be not visible?
And that's the intent with the parapets. I do know that. And what we'll do is, I'm sure your architectural consultant will comment on that, so we'll be sure to respond accordingly on all of that information for you, to get that for you.
Okay. And the other question, for the people that use the garages, will they have the capability to have their own charging station?
Yeah, the electrical code is about to, or already says-
It will, yeah.
That garages have to have at least the hard wiring for that.
So they could bring one in and charge in their own garage?
Yeah, that's in the, it's in the, what they call the stretch code.
Yeah.
I don't believe the town of Penfield has adopted the stretch code yet, but my understanding is that goes into effect statewide next year, so.
Okay. We've been putting them, we've been wiring all our garages-
Perfect.
Even if not required, because we know it, at least then we have it if and when somebody wants to install an EV charger.
Good. Good. That's it?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a brief question?
Sure.
What is the height? You mentioned the, the office buildings next door. What is the height of those, if you know, to the top of the, I know that's a, it's a pitched roof?
We tried to measure and we couldn't. I think they're about 35 feet to the, to the peak.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. I would, we will most likely have additional questions, but I'd like to open up questions to the audience. And if, so Michelle is grabbing the slips of paper. I have one up here and a few more. And then if I can go through these first and then calling you, if, so when I call your name, number one, please forgive me if I don't pronounce it correctly. I'm asking that upfront. Cut me a little bit of slack on that. And then please come up to this table, state your name and address, and address your comments to the board and not to the applicant. And as I mentioned before, we are here for, the planning board is responsible for site plan-related questions, not use-related questions. So first person would be, is it Susan Klee? There you go, first one anyway.
My name is Susan Klee. I live at 2 Devonshire Circle, which is on the corner of Willow Pond Way and Devonshire Circle. The back of my house backs up and faces Crown Oak Apartments. And after listening tonight and having concerns about the traffic, I think it's being really under, underplayed because the traffic that comes off 441 on the straightway of Willow Pond is all day long. There, there isn't much of a break all day long, and the traffic is fast on that part. Now, if you come in from 441 and take a right onto Willow Pond Way, because it circles around, so that would be the corner of Crown Oak and Willow Pond Way, there is no stop sign. There's only stop sign if you're turning onto the main part of Willow Pond. I might sound confusing, but, and there is weekly several cars skidding to stops because of the traffic coming in and trying to take a left. I don't know if I can show you-
You're saying traffic coming in, I think he's trying to bring that up here.
I know, it's kind of hard to, so if you come in from 441 onto Willow Pond Way, let's see where this is.
That's looking north, right, Matt?
Yes. So my house is right there, it would be on the right. That's my house right there.
Okay. Can you go back to the-
So the main fair of Willow Pond Way is heavily trafficked all day long.
So the road that we're looking at right here?
Yes, and the traffic is very, very fast there. It's, so when people cross from Crown Oak across to Willow Pond Way, yes, going, it would be east to west, weekly, there is always cars skidding to stops because of that traffic going so fast. Now, if you're adding, you know, at least another 88 on the downside cars coming off there, taking a left, do you know what I mean? Coming, coming east off Willow Pond Way, take, turning north onto Willow Pond Way.
Right, so the, at the main intersection, can you leave street view?
Yes.
You're talking that intersection right there, right?
Yes. So if you're coming from the new proposed site to exit off 441, you would be taking a left. That's already backed up in the morning, in the afternoon, and it's a very dangerous intersection already. Like I say, there's cars constantly skidding to a stop because people will take a left out in front. The main fair has no stop sign there. There's also people that cross there to Crown, into Crown Oak that go to Wegmans. It's also very dangerous, and there's a lot of the senior citizens from the legacy that walk to Wegmans. The neighborhood is also heavily walked by everyone. There's people walking dogs, there's people walking children. I'm the president of the Devonshire Homes Association, and that includes Devonshire Circle, Courshire Lane, and part of Camberley. It's 236 units. So there's a lot of people there. There's already traffic that cuts through from 441, trying to avoid the 250 intersection, cuts through the neighborhood to go out onto 250. So that's already hea, more heavily traveled too. Now, the town of Penfield has stopped plowing the sidewalks two years ago. They plowed them for 35 years in our neighborhood, and they stopped plowing them two years ago. So now you have all these people walking in the road in the winter. There's people jogging, there's people walking, they walk their dogs, there's kids in the neighborhood that, you know, get the buses down on the corner of Live Oak and Willow Pond, Kitzera and Willow Pond, so it's heavily walked too. And also where the proposed project is, the houses that are in front of that on Willow Pond going towards Sanders Farm, there's a lot of small children that live there, like families. So there's going to be a lot of traffic coming out of these apartments, going either way. But I think the majority will go out to exit onto 441. It's very hard to get out of Sanders Farm, taking a left onto Penfield Road, almost impossible. And I just think it's going to be a real detriment to our neighborhood. I think it's going to be dangerous. I think there would probably have to be either a four-way stop sign at Willow Pond and Crown Oak, or a traffic light to compensate for this. There's just too many walkers. Like I say, there's almost weekly accidents, there's been accidents there. There was even someone hit by a car there a couple of years back. It's, it's a very dangerous intersection already, and I think adding all these cars, you know, 88 units, even if one unit had one car, that's still 88 cars in and out all day, along with all the medical building traffic that's been added there also.
Okay.
So I think it's, it's going to make it much more dangerous to add that in and all those extra cars.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Next, Mike, is it Ehrig?
Yeah, Ehrig, yeah.
Come on up. So I pronounce it right?
I live right there. Don't go, Dave. My name is Mike Ehrig. I live at 2016 Penfield Road, directly across from Sanders Farm. Dave, that's not right. There are a lot of cars that go there. I'm up at 5:00 in the morning, can't help it, I'm 75 years old, watch TV, watch the cars, watch them go like a bat out of HE double hockey sticks. So I know what's going on. Now, I don't really understand this because we've been doing this for years, and how many of you drive on 441?
Every day.
All right. You go over 40, because that's what's going on. They're going 45, 50 miles an hour down past that roof. So now let me settle down a little bit here. I brought my tablet to actually do other stuff, but eh, got me going. So one of the questions I've got is, if you're on 441, you're traveling 40 miles an hour or less theoretically, you should be okay. But I've actually been rear-ended trying to get in my driveway. But about the project here, are there going to be security cameras? Because it sounds like you're going to probably need some kind of a security system. Do you know that? Any, any cameras at all? I was just curious because that's a lot of people there. You got 88 spaces, probably everybody's going to have two cars. I mean, almost everybody's a two-car family. So that's 176 cars alone. Now, I know that people skirt that Willow Pond light. Now, she's really, really good, she's right. But a lot of them skirt that light and they come to Sanders Farm. Now, let's say just half of them do that. That's 88 more cars. 88 more cars that are going to try to make a left going west because there's no reason to go right unless you're going to Wegmans. Okay, they're going to be shooting out, trying to get by those cars that are going 55 miles an hour. And I'm not exaggerating, that's what they go. So that's going to be a pretty interesting thing right there in itself. Now, the other deal I was wondering about is, the, the building's 40 feet tall, it sits in a gully, but are we going to be like the Pines of Parentin where you can see all the rooftops when you drive by? Or is it going to be high enough, or I should say low enough, I was thinking the gully high enough to not have to see that? That was another thing I had a question on. Because, you know, it's kind of a weird deal, but I think if you're trying to make something look good, it should look good all the way, not just part of the way. And another question I have is, who does the snow plowing there? Now, you mentioned the sidewalks don't get done in your area, but who does snow plowing? Is that private or public land now? So are we going to be plowing as a town of Penfield, or is that going to be somebody private that plows it? There's a lot of things that you think about, and when you have two cars, you might have three cars. It might be a three-car family. Who do you know is going to move in there? That, young children? We don't know. Could be somebody needs a teenager, has a third car. Now you've got more traffic. So my main concern is the speed and the traffic. And there, I know there's nothing we can do. It's a state road, it's not a Penfield road that we can control. We have no police force. We've got one sheriff that we know who's been trying to, to help curb that speed, but he's only there two times a week, when he can, if there's nothing else going on. And we've actually, my wife has actually talked to the guy. And every so often you get lucky, but it's really tough. And the more people you get in the Penfield, especially in this area, I think it could raise the crime a little bit too. And as we get older, a lot of us are senior citizens now on Penfield Road. I've been there 32, 33 years now. It's, it's getting to be to the point where you're more wary of everything. You know, it's not the time anymore where you can leave a door unlocked or a garage door open. You got to be more careful. There's a lot of foot traffic too. So just a few of my comments, but I am curious about the, the things like the snow plowing, the security, the amount of cars that are going by, and, you know, Dave, if you'd like, you can come in my front yard, or come on in, I'll give you some pumpkin pie, we just bought one, and sit there tomorrow morning with a glass of milk or a cup of coffee, we'll make it. Let's watch the cars, and let's watch the speed going down 441 west, and you'd be amazed at how fast they go, how many times you hear motorcycles that sound like they're, not Harleys by the way, rice burners. You know, the Hondas that are just, "Bee!" Okay? And then, of course, the semis that are trying to brake because they didn't go too fast coming from the east going to west, and they go over that little hill. And I was one of the ones there when they dropped the grade down, made a better racetrack. So anyways, thank you, that's just my words, and I'm, I'm not going to say I'm against putting it in. I just hope it's done logically. It sounds like it will be, but I'm so worried about that traffic and people getting hurt. I never even heard about people getting hurt on Willow Pond. And my daughter had a, an, a townhouse on Jacaronda Trail. I remember going down there, but I don't know about the speeding, but she, she's right. That's a, that's definitely an issue too, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just had, I, I've lived there for, I just want to add one more, one more quick thing. I'm sorry. I've lived there for 38 years.
She got it, sweetie.
So I've, and I've, I've lived in Penfield all my life. I've lived there since I started first grade, which I'm not even going to say how many years, but, but I've lived there for 38 years, and I've watched that traffic totally increase in that neighborhood since I've been there. They built Crown Oak Estates, they built the medical buildings, and, you know, we got the apartments back in Willow Pond. There is a lot of- in Willow Pond. There is a lot of traffic. It'll be much more than single-digit cars all day long. And like I say, there would have to be a four-way stop put in there at Crown Oak, or there would have to be a traffic light. Otherwise, there's gonna be a lot of accidents. And he's right, that the speed on 441 and Willow Pond Way is totally out of control. There's guys on those motorcycles. There's someone I think who lives in the Willow Pond Apartments. He goes by in the summer and my husband and I are like, this kid, this guy's just gonna crash at the end. But the traffic is already very, very dangerous there. So I just wanted to add how long I've lived there and how much I've seen it change over the years already.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Wendy Roach. I live at 61 Willow Pond Way. First, I want to thank Chris, Kristen, Peter for the modifications to the project. As he said, they did meet with us, a few of the neighbors that back up to the project, which we greatly appreciated. And this is my first time really getting a closer look at some of the modifications that they made. So I do appreciate those. So I just want to say thank you. I will say that I do still question the need for apartments, especially with almost 1,000 apartments going up Atlantic and 250 and over by the Y. I will say again, I do wish it was an opportunity for single-family homes, people who would be invested in our neighborhood, not transient renters necessarily, because we do have three apartment communities in our neighborhood, along with the office parks. That said, I know this is supposed to be targeting high-income dinks, if you will. And I assume that that is still the plan for these, probably more than my mortgage. So I'm not seeing that there's gonna be children or that type of thing. Obviously, not against kids. I, like I said, I'm at 61 Willow Pond Way. I've got three of those kids that she mentioned that are playing out in the front yard that I've had concerns about. And I've been coming to the town since 2013 about some of the concerns. But today, I'm speaking on behalf of the six neighbors who buffer the project, and the nearly 20 neighbors who are from Sanders Farm to where this project would start. And I've lived here for 17 years. My oldest child is almost 16. And like I said, when he was young, we were having traffic issues. If you look at this aerial view, you'll notice it's an S-shaped curve. We've had traffic studies, we've gone before the Transportation Department. If this project, and I will say, we are not against, or the majority of us are not against this project. When I moved here, I knew that there was the likelihood that it was gonna be another Legacy. And that never came about. So I have enjoyed a beautiful wooded backyard for 17 years, which has been nice. Which is why I'm saying thank you to the modifications that have been made that will help keep that like park-like setting that we do have and that our neighbors have in our yard. So, I'm not against that. But what I'm concerned about is if we are adding more people to the neighborhood, first of all, and we're talking about pedestrian traffic. If these are apartments where people are allowed to have pets, if they have dogs and they're walking, there is no current sidewalk structure from this development to Sanders Farm. Appreciate the sidewalk that was just put in down the Speedway of Willow Pond to the end of Devonshire. That's lovely. I've used it a bunch. I'm one of the people who walks, you know, a couple miles every day. But that S-curve is very dangerous. The people, like she said, people walking from Legacy, the older people, it is a blind spot. I've watched people push strollers. I've been the one pushing strollers, trying to get out of the way of traffic. It is, it's not a safe situation. So the reason, I know this is not something that's necessarily falling on your department, but I think it's important that we keep talking about it because I don't want this to fall on deaf ears. As far as, I want this to be part of every scope that moves to the next planning phase, if this goes to the town board, that this, I implore you to make modifications to the traffic and to the structures of the sidewalk system or whatever in this neighborhood, because it has been an issue long before this proposal came up. And the only thing we got out of it was Carport Court becoming a three-way stop. That was after a serious car accident where kids wrapped their car around a tree at the corner. The pedestrian walkways that they put at the Willow Pond crossing over to Crown Oak, we were told were gonna be similar to what was put in place by the library and up at the high school where you could press the button. They basically put up signs saying pedestrian walkway, which you can see there. When they did the stone and tar project, they painted over, they went over the spots a few years ago. So there's actually no walkway there anymore, even though we've asked them to put it back, it's not been put back. But they were also supposed to put those buttons so you could actually push when you're walking over to Wegmans or where you're crossing the street. And like she mentioned, a woman was severely injured after being hit there not too long ago. So I'm not sure what's going on with that project. I don't know who plows sidewalks. That's not even an issue. But the point is, there's not a sufficient pedestrian-friendly area. If you're adding, you know, more people, if there's pets, if they're walking, that's not, we've gotta look at that. It's an S-shape. There's two blind spots. My kids, well, my oldest doesn't wait for the bus anymore because he's too cool, but my elementary school one goes to the bus stop. You know, and we've had so many issues with, it's not necessarily the cars, it's the speed. And I don't know how many times to like, how to reiterate that. It's, most of the people are driving like, okay. But when you've got the people who are flying around the corner, who blow through the stop sign, and we're adding potentially 80 to 100 some more cars per day going through there. They are going to come down Sanders Farm, if they are coming from the highway, they are going to come down Sanders Farm to get to this project, to get to the development. They're not gonna pass it and come to the light. That would be ridiculous. They are gonna do what everybody who's going to Legacy is doing, everybody who is going to the office park is doing. They're coming down Sanders, hitting the gas and flying around the S-curve to get to where this entrance would be. We've stopped doctors who live at the, or who work at the office building several times. People who are working at Legacy, I will say, it's generally not the residents of Legacy that we have, or Addison, I'm sorry, that we have an issue with. But it's a concern. So, it's not that we're saying that it's gonna be the majority of the people who are, you know, hitting the gas through there. But it's already a problem when we're adding a lot more traffic. So I would ask that we do look for ways to mitigate traffic coming from Sanders Farm to this project entrance. When we talk about 441 and Willow Pond, the number of people, I've told my son who's getting close to driving, I said, you do not go when that light turns green. You never go when that light turns green. Weekly accidents, sometimes multiple times a day because everyone blows that light. I do not understand why the town has not considered making a delayed green. So when people who blow the light, you know, it doesn't turn green on our side until, like, it gives it a little bit of time for that. But that's obviously not before you guys to decide. But, and then I still don't understand why the speed would increase as you head towards 250, when you go towards Wegmans. The speed limit actually increases, which, you're going into a business district, makes no sense. It goes up to 40. Not that anybody pays attention to it anyway, but I'm just gonna note that. A couple of concerns I do have about the project. We talked, and I don't know if, in the plans, there's the water feature or the retention pond area. We had a lot of issues the last couple of years with the Willow Pond. I don't think there's anything that moves that water in Willow Pond. And it smells. There's a lot of bug issues. So I would ask that there's some sort of a water feature similar to what's over by Eagle Vale that moves the water in the retention pond?
This, that was one of the questions that I had asked. And it, as proposed, it's not gonna have standing water from what?
Okay. Because previously, the sketches that I had seen did have blue in there, which I assumed was water. Okay. I also want to confirm that as far as, you know, a lot of the questions were answered about the buffer. But when it comes to like garbage collection, that it's not going to be dumpsters. We have an ongoing issue with the neighboring property who has their dumpster emptied at 5:00 AM on Wednesdays, and it slams back down onto the ground every Wednesday morning at 5:00 AM. That's super annoying. Been dealing with that for a number of years. But I do believe that, I just want to go on record confirming that there's totes and there's a garbage area, and it's not gonna be that situation again. And then, I would like to know, as far as, you know, I know that this whole three-story situation, appreciate looking at what it would look like if it wasn't three stories. And apparently, that brings it to three buildings. However, from my backyard, I'm curious what that's gonna look like. I know there's supposed to be visual impact studies that are done if a modification is approved. You know, like I said, there's six of us who back up to that. So I'd be curious to see like, what that looks like. Also, when they talk about the buffer, what, I mean, is all of that land being completely cleared and mature trees brought in? Or am I waiting five or six years to get privacy like I currently have? Would be my question. I will just say, you know, again, I hate to beat a dead horse about the traffic, but I'd be remiss if I did not share the concerns, again, with the neighbors that I talked to who live over on Camberly Place and New Wick. They're very concerned about the excess traffic headed out to 250. I use it as a cut-through because I don't want to go to the intersection of 441 and 250. A lot of us do. But they're obviously very concerned about the increase in traffic too. So, I guess, bottom line, from what you're hearing from everybody, as, you know, if this is approved and it goes forward, and like I said, we appreciate the modifications that have been made and the understanding really that we've been given, especially as direct neighbors who are backing up to this and who are really losing the privacy that we've had for so long, I really implore you guys to make modifications part of this project. Or, I don't know how you do that, but, you know, that's what you keep hearing. And that's why, like, it's, everyone's gonna be beating this dead horse here. It's an issue. It's been an issue ever since I moved in here, ever since I had kids. I have emails back to 2013 meeting before the Transportation Committee. And, you know, it keeps getting a little bit worse every year. And it's exhausting. Like, I just, I don't have time. None of us have time to keep coming to the meetings and, you know, trying to figure out how to fix this. I know speed bumps aren't the answer. I don't know what the answer is. But I would just ask that this is taken a closer look at and made part of the project as you guys go forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any answer? Can we get an answer on the plan of how we're gonna clear the land? Or is it too soon to talk about that? Or?
We should be, there's a proposed landscape buffer, and we can have them go over that again to see what, if any existing vegetation is proposed to stay, or if that's proposed to be all new plantings.
Are, is all of the new plans available for residents to get? Like, I know there's a lot of new stuff.
I believe so, yeah, on the website, right?
They're foilable as PDFs. We also have printed copies up at the Planning Department Office.
So we'd have to do a foil request to get a copy?
Correct. There's a site plan and other materials available on the website, but the full plan sets, foilable.
Okay. All right. That's all.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Joseph Powell. I sit, or I live at 5 Sanders Farm Drive, which is right at the corner of Willow Pond and Sanders Farm Drive. I came, I come as a resident. I'm also a licensed mechanical engineer focusing in buildings engineering. So I've also looked at plans and I understand a little bit about the technicalities of the building, what it looked like. I do want to start with reinforcing the statements about traffic. My neighbors probably know me as the guy who stands out on the corner, watching my kids, making sure they're not getting hit by cars, occasionally stepping out in front of a car that decides that a stop sign is optional. I don't see any resolution to this unless there's a police presence, which there will never be in Penfield because we don't have a police force. Or some structure that's obstructing people from going fast, whether it be a bump. Make it a traffic circle so people have to slow down so they don't have to, they don't cut, they can't cut that corner. But read this view on the screen. Just the other night, there was a black van that said, you know what, I'm not stopping, cut that corner right up next to the street or the yard where my kids were playing. And it's really, it's scary how fast they're going. They're not going 25, they're going 40. And they're cutting that turn very, very close to my house. So, yes, we need to address that somehow. And with regards to the traffic from the development, putting some speed bumps in might also be a detriment to them saying, you know what, I'm not gonna go that way because it's slower, I'm gonna go to the light. And that, I think, would make people feel a little bit better about the traffic, especially in this single-family home neighborhood. Yeah. So with that said, you know, I did have some comments, questions on the actual site plan. Actually, I want to stay with traffic because I did write down some notes. But 19 cars coming out of Sanders Farm Drive between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning just sounds outlandishly low. I don't know if the counters were wrong, but I could see 19 in maybe 30 minutes, maybe less. And so, there's a lot. And I would implore that the numbers be checked again. But beyond that, I don't necessarily see how 88 apartments worth of double-income, no-kids individuals, so 176 individuals, are only adding single-digits to the trips in the morning and in the evening. To me, 176 cars?
That was, I think, to clarify that, that was, right now, there's a nursing home, 150-bed nursing home approved that they could build tomorrow. And my understanding, the way I understood the comment was that there was single-digit increases over the, if the nursing home was there, not over the existing condition. Does that make sense?
So over the existing condition, we're talking about 100-plus cars increased during 7:00 and 9:00 and whatever it was, 5:00 to 7:00. So, that's a significant increase in my mind. And I think we all know that traffic studies, at least this is my impression, they're not measuring speed of vehicular traffic, but they're measuring just how many cars, right? They're not measuring, hey, they're only going 25 or they're going, you know, 40. It's really just a measurement of, are the streets capable of carrying the traffic that's proposed? And I think that's for certain. But can it carry that traffic safely is the question. And I don't think any traffic study's gonna answer that beyond vehicular safety. I do wonder also if that traffic study included any of those double-income, no-kids individuals who are working from home on days. Is there a reduced intensity that was assumed? Or is it the full intensity of five days a week work, everybody's in during that 7:00 and 9:00 and out during the peak period in the evening? Because, to me, that's when I would be working, as somebody who goes out to the city. So, with the water supply, I think I heard that the water supply is gonna come off of 441 now, instead of the Willow Pond Way water main. Is that, did I hear that right? That one's gonna answer me. But...
Well, I've asked you to address your questions to us. That's, are you asking about freshwater supply?
Freshwater supply to the development. So we're talking about...
I don't know the answer to that question, but I mean, it certainly could be provided.
If it's a six-inch water main, you know, there's a certain capacity. Has that been modeled to make sure that there's no impacts, significant impacts to the water supply pressure that's available in the street there, which would impact all of the residents in the area, not just, you know, to the development itself? I think I also have similar concerns over... I think I also have similar concerns over the sewer. I think we all know the development at Atlantic and 250 had significant sewer upgrades required to meet that capacity. Is that similar level of impact going to happen here? I also have concerns over construction staging. Where is construction going to be staged? What is the impact to 441 and Willow Pond Way during construction? Will they be shutting down half of that road? You know, these, these are all going to drive traffic during construction towards Sanders Farm, in my opinion, which I live there. I would like less cars, fewer. But, okay. Stormwater drainage, I saw that up to the back of the, the single-family homes in the south there, there was some snow storage that was proposed there. My question would be, is that area drained to the retention pond or is that going to just percolate into the soil? And what would that do to, I know we were trying to mitigate any runoff concerns, especially as it goes south and west, but is that area drained? Looks like there's one catch basin there. But all the way off to the, to the south and west, you know, that, that's going to be where they're going to pile up the snow, at least according to the, the site plan that's on the, the Penfield website.
So I, I think we, if you were, I'm not sure if you were here when I asked that question and he did go through some of those answers, right?
Yep.
The, for the southwest corner?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And how much would go into that catch basin and how most of it would go to the east?
Okay. We'll trust them. Bob, I think you asked the question that I had about the HVAC and how is AC being provided? And there are going to be rooftop units that are going to push the total height of the building up, the visual height of the building, maybe not the physical height. And we're going to have parapet walls that are going to obstruct the view of, of those units. But in terms of acoustics, has an acoustical study been performed to determine whether there is going to be, let's say louder noise in the neighbors' backyards as compared to the current, the existing condition? I think the same goes for traffic. You know, they're going to have their, their, their right-of-way there through the, right behind these houses. And is that going to be a concern regarding noise and, and traffic moving through their site? Are they going to have to put in their own speed bumps to slow people down so that it's not as loud? I guess, you know, the final thing that I wanted to address to the group here was regarding amenities for these buildings. So the apartments to the east, they have a significant number of children that live there, significant number of people. But one of the, the eyesores associated with that apartment complex is there's a massive pile of bikes that's visible from the street. And I didn't see on the site plan where bikes were going to be stored. I think, you know, people in general, especially dinks, they like to get out, they like to do things. Where are the bikes proposed for storage? Is there an indoor bike room, something that's, that's allocated? Right now, there's nothing allocated on the site. But some, something that I have a concern with because also the other Mark IV development, the other apartment complex that's further south on Willow Pond, if you go drive over there, they have outside space, but typically that outside space is covered in people's storage, right? And so there's another eyesore that, that is there and visible from the street. So from, from a, from a site perspective, how is this all being kept safe, fire safety as well as, you know, visually appealing? You know, and, and the other thing that, that I think that is on a lot of people's minds, and I know this is not, we're not talking about schools or the impact there, but you know, what is drawing these, the, the target crowd, the, the dinks to these apartments? If there's no amenities inside the building, a pool, fitness, fitness center, some level of storage, even bike storage, anything to draw them here? And I'm not saying Penfield is a bad place to live. I live here, I've lived here for seven years, I love it. But what drew me to Penfield was the schools. And if there are no children here, that's great, but my wife works in, in Cobles, which is the elementary school that services this area. And they just built out four new apartment, uh, four new classrooms not long ago. And I will tell you that those classrooms are all full. There, there's 23, 24 kids in each class and they're really, you know, 88 apartments worth of, of children not be accommodated by the schools at this point. And so that also needs to be included in the calculus here is what can these, what can our, our facilities, our infrastructure handle as it relates to all these new developments? And I'm not sure that the town of Penfield has a plan. There might be reactionary, but you know, that is just something that, it needs to be considered because teaching and schooling is just getting harder for these teachers and having more and more kids is going to impact everybody's child's education. So you know, if there's a special use permit written for this facility, which is what the applicant is, is seeking, they have specifically indicated that they're targeting double-income, no-kids. I would, I would recommend that, given that, if there's no plan for the, the added loads on our, on our schools, that some provision be put in that special use permit that states that this is going to be a similar usage to a nursing home, which is the comparison that the application is making. Oh, we had a 150-apartment nursing home. That's 150 people that are not using the schools. Now we're putting in an 88-apartment, double-income, no-kids is our target market. So at least two people per, well, two people per apartment, not at least, but two people per apartment, so it's 176. That's an increase of 26 people, more cars coming and going. But also, the comparison between a nursing home and the apartments, just it places an undue a, a burden, I think, on generally all the things we've been talking about, traffic, the schools, water usage. Peak water usage in a building like this is different than in a, in a nursing home complex. You know, same thing for the sewer, you know, water in sewer out. So these things have to be considered before we, before the, there's undue burden placed on, I think, the town to provide these services. So with that, I will end my, my speech.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Okay, would anyone else like to comment on this application? Yeah, come on up.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll try to be brief. The Northern Whites are out tonight. They're beautiful, so we got to go check them out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Um, thank you. It's Dave Roder, 12 Carib Court. I'd like to address a few of the issues. First of all, drainage, they talked about drainage. And I understand, I heard you mention that there's no plans to have standing water, right? Like there's a retention.
That's what, it seems that way.
Okay, gotcha. You know.
You know, I think they proposed more of a, it's like a, what we call a rain garden. So water gets filtered through the plant material in that management facility, filters through the water and then it goes on to, I think, Willow Pond.
Yeah.
Cleans it up.
You know, um, to, to be honest, I, I've heard this from Mark IV and these guys before. My property backs up to the legacy and there's drainage issues. And they said there shouldn't be any drainage issues and we'll dig the hole, put the gravel in and there won't be any standing water. And there's been flooding there for years and years and years and it was never rectified, no matter how many times you contacted Mark IV, the legacy, it was completely ignored. There's tons and tons of flooding constantly. So sometimes plans sound good, but they don't really work out that way in reality, especially with this group. There's also been a lot of flooding issues in the walking trails at the end of all the cul-de-sacs. There's some very nice trails in there now and those have been taken over by.
At the center of the.
Yeah, the center walking trails. When Mark IV and the legacy disaster flood, you couldn't even use the trails for a few months in the springs. It wasn't supposed to flood, but it did. Their engineering, whatever, it didn't work out. Finally, we had Jim Costello, we had the new manager, you know, finally took over and, and there's adequate drains now, so it works better now that they're not there. But these guys are telling us that they're going to put in adequate drainage and there's already problems with water back there. There's already drainage issues. Matter of fact, there's marshland back there. You can go to 441, you can go to the apartments, the two large apartments, to the parking lights there. You can see reeds and marshes and red bird, black birds. These live in swamps and marshes, you know? That's an awful lot of asphalt to put on top of a marsh and expect it to drain properly. So I, I don't bother the fact that there's not going to be problems with water and moisture. And flooding is inconvenient, flooding's a mess, but things are different now than they were 20 years ago when this plan was originally approved for nursing homes. I mean, yeah, there's a lot more traffic, a lot more, but now there's mosquitoes that have illnesses, right? There's no such thing as mosquitoes in New York State with carried illnesses like they do in the tropics. Now there are. And I don't have any confidence that their plan is going to address water that's going to sit around, stink, like Wendy said, and at the Willow Pond Park swamp. And I mean, it's just, it's a lot of asphalt and a lot of buildings to cram in, in a hilly area where there's already marshes and four and a half area. It's just too big. It's too much for that one little area. People have talked about traffic studies and talked about safety quite a bit. Matter of fact, there's 260 people that signed petitions that were adamantly opposed to this because mostly of safety issues and traffic issues. But the point, it was brought up a little here, it's not just cars and safety and people on New Wickham that can't pull out and Devonshire Circle that can't back out of the driveway, there's already too much traffic and that this would add a lot more traffic. But that's cars. Let's talk about people and me when I ride my bike and people, senior citizens from the legacy and all the kids. The, the safety issues, the kids and the walkers and pedestrians and the people walking their dogs. It's, it, you know, we're not, yeah, it's a problem to sit and try to get onto 441. Nobody wants to sit at traffic so long and this is going to make it work. And Sanders Farm is impossible, but that's a car. That's an inconvenience. It's, sometimes it's very unsafe, but there's, you can't cram that many new cars into that tiny little area that are going to be coming and going all day long and expect not to have drastic safety issues for all the pedestrians. This was designed Jimmy Carter, Carter Administration. It's a, a walking neighborhood. It's a different type than all their big suburban subdivisions in Penfield. People walk here all the time. Everybody knows each other. They see each other on the street. It's different. You, you can't put that much traffic where all these people are walking around. A couple extra sidewalks isn't going to make, make a difference. It's just too much people driving too fast, you know? And who's actually going to live here? I mean, this is, the, the developer said before they have extensive research on who their target market is. They spoke at the first meeting in front of you folks and said it was dinks, dual-income, no-kids. Then they spoke in front of the town board and they said it's going to be a mixture of divorced people, kids, single people, married people. I mean, that's completely different than dual-income, no-kids. I mean, who's supposed to live here? You know, the traffic engineer, maybe, maybe I misheard, but I thought he said that at 2:00 AM in the morning, they expect more traffic from senior citizens than they do from dinks or whoever is supposed to live here. I don't know if I heard that wrong, but I mean, that should, that comment alone should negate any, any, any confidence in their traffic study. You know, a traffic study paid for by BME. Maybe, maybe there should be a traffic study by somebody that's independent and is not going to say, I mean, there's more senior citizens are going to be driving more, there's going to be more traffic at 2:00 AM from senior citizens than there are from dinks, dual-income, no-kids, people that are in bars in Fairport coming home? I mean, none of this even makes sense. They said they had extensive research on who their target market is. Then they were asked how much the rent's going to be for a one-bedroom apartment. They couldn't even answer in front of the town board. They had no idea. Then, then two or three people discussed and they came up with $21 a month for a one-bedroom. It's, it's, it's on the videos in the Penfield TV. Who, who's going to live here? I mean, there's over 1,000 apartments coming online right in this general neighborhood in the very near future. They're already approved, they're already being built. And there's apartments that have four rent signs all over the place, they're not even rented yet. So what happens when they can't rent $2,100 a month for dinks or divorced people or whoever's going to live there? And, and again, there's no amenities like the previous speaker. I mean, why would they want to live there and pay that much money? What, what's going to happen then? Are we going to apply for modification and put in Section 8 housing? Are we going to put, wind up like Crown Oak? All the crime that people from Devonshire will tell you about that comes out of Crown Oak? That close to Wegmans Plaza where, you know, look what happened to Arana Quimmon and everywhere else without a crime from, from, you know? I mean, these, these, it's just too big to put in four and a half acres of land, 84 apartments. Then they start talking about how, well, there's less total square footage and there's 150 apartments, 150 senior citizens, and this is less intrusive. Okay, 84 apartments is it? Times two people per apartment, 168 people. It's not 150 single senior citizens, it's more people. 150 senior citizens, most of them don't have cars. You can go to Legacy and they'll still tell you that. Eighty, 170 parking spots, a lot more cars than there are with 150 senior citizens and a lot more people coming and going all day long. It's a lot more traffic than the original plan that was approved for, for senior living. I mean, this is approved for senior living a long time ago, not for apartments. It was a bad idea for apartments back then. It's a worse idea now. 22 years ago was one thing. Now look at how much traffic there is. Now look at all the danger that this poses residents. People are here, there's 260 people or whatever signed a petition, they don't want anything to do with this. And that's because it's not safe and you can't cram some, they didn't even own this land a year ago. They just bought this and tried to cram this in at the last minute, even though the entire community doesn't want it. I think even the five residents that are saying, that, that, that arguing with these guys about two, two floors versus three floors, I mean, I don't think anybody really wants this. It's, it's, I guess that about summarizes it, but I mean, they've misled residents about drainage issues before, not just behind my house, but in the trails, with the walking trails. And it took years to rectify and this developer never rectified them. So their plans are suspect to begin with. Then they say that they have a traffic study, but it didn't really talk about pedestrians. It only talked about cars and vehicles, which is bad enough, but you throw in people walking around and kids and senior citizens, this is just too dangerous. I just, anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak to this application? All right, let me quick check and see if there's any calls. No calls, no electronic. Do we have any more comments from the board at this time?
No.
All right. Do you have any final closing statement you want to make or what we'll be doing is taking all these comments, putting them into a tabling resolution?
That sounds great. We were also hoping though that tonight you could declare your intent to be lead, lead agency and direct.
That we probably can do. Is the town board looking to be lead agent on this or?
No, planning.
Okay.
Ideally, the planning board would be lead agent.
We can certainly request that.
Great. And then we were hoping that we could come back on your workshop meeting at the end of this month and hopefully be ready for a preliminary site plan approval at your November meeting.
I can't promise that.
I'm not asking for a promise. That was our, our hope. I know that.
That all has to do with comments, tabling resolution, how those comments are addressed.
Great. Thank you very much.
I think we're a little bit premature for that.
Yeah, Chris Myers, I had to mention this, about the seeker determination. I believe the planning board should be the lead agency, given that you've got to grant preliminary site plan approval before this action can go to the town board and you're going to make that decision without a seeker determination. So I believe it would be appropriate for the planning board to de- declare the lead agency.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can take a vote on that when we get into the work session portion of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take care of that later on. Okay, next item.
All right, public hearing item number.
All right, public hearing item number three. McMahon, LaRue Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Arnold DePietro, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision approval to subdivide a 32.685 acres into two lots, Lot 301 being 2.62, 2.671 acres, and the remaining lands being 30.014 acres with the existing family home at 35 Apollonia Lane, Fairport, New York, 14450. The properties now are formerly owned by Arnold DePietro and Zoned Residential Rural Agricultural, RA2, application 24P-0024, SBL 126.01-1-52.
Excuse me, do you guys mind if you're going to have a conversation? We have another public hearing. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Hal LaRue, McMahon, LaRue Associates. Eric Gioka, the builder that's been building all the homes in this, other than maybe Arnold DePietro's original home up on the hill, has been doing all the building there. So he's here to add whatever, you know, information he could in terms of what is planned for that space. As mentioned, it's 2.67 acres. Between, Eric Gioka actually lives to the north of it. That's his home. And this is between him, the empty space that's between him and Arnold DePietro's home up on the hill. Now, this lot is kind of unusual because it's got a 32-foot vertical difference in elevation from Apollonia up to the top of the hill. We have performed PERC tests. The health department has witnessed them. The home that we're proposing is a, is just a, it's a square right now at this point, but they do have a, what's pushing this is they do have a, someone who wants to build there. And I have taken a look at the home that's, that is, they would like to build and it does fit. Not a problem with that. So it's, the front of the house is 248 feet west of Apollonia up on the hill. And so I think it does a nice job of filling in the west side of Apollonia from Arnold DePietro's house to the south and Eric's existing home to the north. So that kind of completes that area. I know we're going to be doing some more work at the end of the cul-de-sac and that sort of thing, but this is kind of separated, which caused us to say, let's just do one lot here because we have somebody that's really hot for it and wants it. We have received the town comments and we have addressed them. And yes, we only did it on October 10, October 9th, but we've addressed all the comments on the plan and we've submitted all that information to town staff. So with that, we can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Do you want to start, Kelly?
Yeah, sure. So a couple of things. Where do we stand on the road, fixing the road issues?
Well, we've addressed it in the report. What we're proposing to do right now is to, as a good town staff, let's walk it. I did drive it. I've driven it quite a lot of times. And there's a spot where the entrance is. Let's just paint it out. And there's also a crossing between a couple of catch basins. That's a dip. I did look at the cul-de-sac and quite frankly, I don't see how that is, needs to be completely redone. But again, that's for a meeting that can take place. And I would think that would be something we'd want to do very soon before the asphalt plants close.
So the concern was that the road, that this development was started a while ago. So the road was put in back, I believe, in 2002.
Way long ago, right.
And it was never, there's never a top sealer coat on it. It was installed as binder and it's been binder for 22 years. That binder has deteriorated. So I think there was some concern on the engineering side that the road really needs repair and should be topped at some point here in the near future, just for maintenance.
Well, I also think that the DPW director has also walked this since we plowed this and has concerns. So that if they're proposing to have a meeting, that should include our DPW director and, because they've walked it and they've had several areas that they want either redone and fixed and then basically milled and then resurfaced and topped. So, and that was part of their last approval.
And the previous approval before that as well, go back to 2019 with the first four.
For Section 1?
Yes, for Section 1 of what's the, the modern Bramble Ridge.
Yeah, the modern, right.
So I think it's Section 3 of Bramble Ridge overall. But yes, in 2019, I believe it was actually October of 2019 when that was approved for the first four or five lots.
Sure.
That was a condition back then as well.
Yeah, we'd like to, whoever wants to come to a meeting, come out with some paint and let's start painting it and let's see what we can do.
To me, I'm not the boss of our staff and the departments. The, you know, I think you're obviously aware of some of the concerns that the town has about, you know, we've approved with conditions at least twice in the past and those conditions have not been met. So there's a concern that if we grant approval on this one, what's, how should we believe any different today than before?
I think one of the things we want to really consider too is that we're going to be building more homes at the end of the cul-de-sac. And there's going to be more truck traffic and that sort of thing. So, you know, to put in a really, really nice road with a top right now, which, you know, I understand that was part of the condition, may not be from a practical standpoint, the best approach. And it could be handled with a letter of credit or some money that's put in. I don't know what Arnold has. Do you know?
Well, I'm not sure if there's a letter of credit outstanding from when the road was first put in. I'd imagine there is. I don't know. But, you know, from a standpoint of we've got a house under construction, we have another one at the cul-de-sac that's an approved lot that's sold, will be getting construction soon. And hopefully this third one here, you know, to top it now would, I think, be detrimental to the road's future health. Like I just did a 13-lot subdivision in Massillon. They let us put all 13 homes in before we topped the road. And topping the road is my responsibility. When the 13 lots were done, that's when we topped the road. I don't think that's abnormal. What's abnormal about this probably is the fact that, you know-
It's been 20-plus years.
Been 20-plus years, but the finish line is now in sight. 20-plus years ago, there was no finish line in sight. There was no even subdivision of additional lots. It was really just a one-house subdivision with the road that went in. I don't know, you know, what happened 22 years ago. Probably nobody does, but there is a finish line in sight.
And again, we don't, we know that we can post something to make that happen at the end of this, when this is done, then it's topped and finished correctly. I mean, there's probably some medial things that need to be done right now, fixing some of the subbase items. Yeah, I agree and I saw those. And we should do that right now. But as far as topping it and finishing it, I think it'd be detrimental to the, to the end product, if you will. But I think the town should have something in their hand to ensure that it is going to happen when that time comes.
Yeah, there's a few other-
Stormwater.
There's a stormwater facility that hasn't been installed. That was required for the last approved plans. That hasn't been installed.
Is there a reason for that?
That was at the end of the cul-de-sac, over here?
Correct.
I don't know.
No, I don't have an answer for that. Okay.
We can certainly do that too. That's not a, I mean, I thought it was built all this time, so, because everything was under construction, so.
I'm maybe speaking out of turn here because I'm not day-to-day involved with this, but I believe that the last approval was made with the intent and the commitment to do those improvements. So-
And I think we had a letter of credit for it too.
I don't think they have been completed, so.
We didn't post a letter of credit for any of that work?
No. I believe we only had, and don't quote me on this, the only letter of credit we may have, we may have something for a top, but there needs to be at least a discussion with the DPW facility, the town engineer, to talk about the road base and see if there's, like, stuff we can do to fix the base. I agree with that. And then, you know, we do have money for a top later on. I would be okay with that. But there's certain parts of the road that need to be milled, redone to at least bring it back to life. And that's really up to the DPW and the DPW assistant, so, for their review of the road. And then as far as the engineering side, the stormwater facility needs to be put in because now we're doing, yeah, it's an MS4 and the number of lots that's required for water quality and quantity. So that really should be installed now.
Okay. Do you have more questions?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have more questions?
No.
Nope.
We'll be putting out a tabling resolution for this. And I think that, to your point, getting everybody together in a meeting probably is a very good idea on this. And hopefully we can get to a mutually beneficial, satisfactory resolution.
That's the goal.
There were some- Absolutely. -improvements to the road based on this summer, which as you were scanning down the road, you could see. I'm not sure, but I think getting together with the DPW and seeing exactly what they want would be important. Okay. All right. I will now offer, anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? I don't think there's anybody raising their hand. Nobody has called in and I don't see any electronic comments. So thank you very much for your presentation. And like I said, we'll be sending a tabling resolution in the next few days.
Super. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will call the public hearing portion of our meeting closed.
All right.
Thanks everyone for coming. We will go into work session now to take what actions we need to take on tonight's applications. So let's start with the first one. Bob, this is yours, right?
Yes.
So I'm thinking we, I'm thinking that Mr. Samuel realizes that he needs to get an actual site plan put together.
Correct. I think there were, as we discussed, there were some shortcomings to some of the detail of the site plan.
Missing information.
Yeah. And, you know, as we talked about the overall concept with the building, I don't believe there's any issues there. It's just a complete package for engineering.
Okay. Any other items we need to put in the tabling resolution that we can think of? If you think of any, add them.
It's relatively straightforward. You just need better plans to more accurately understand the location and layout of the building.
Yeah, don't whisper.
Oh, sorry.
I mentioned that I was going deaf earlier.
Sometimes I'm really loud in the mic and sometimes it's-
Like the low-talking woman on Seinfeld or something.
Okay.
All right, so we want to-
So I will move that we send the applicant a summary letter we discussed.
Tabling resolution.
Tabling resolution.
I'll second. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye. Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Willapond Way, a lot of, what I heard mostly was traffic concerns and safety due to traffic concerns. In terms of our tabling resolution, I don't know if it's necessarily the applicant's responsibility for four-way stops or speed humps or any of that stuff. And who, the town board does that, correct?
Yeah, if they wanted, well, they would go through the transportation.
Would they have a transportation committee that would probably make recommendations to the town board as far as what, things that we should look at, maybe providing or addressing per se? I know they have come to the transportation committee. I don't necessarily know the results of those meetings from, I think, probably pre-COVID time, that there was concerns from the Willapond residents. So I think there was the stop sign added at Sanders Farm and stuff like that, but.
So is that something that we can ask the transportation committee to review the traffic study and the, you know, maybe we can summarize the people's concerns and they might review this at one of their meetings?
Possibly. I mean, we do have our consultant, Barton Lujudis, that is reviewing the traffic study right now. They're hoping to have, you know, response to their study to us, hopefully before the next work session meeting. So then we'll have a better understanding on what their findings were based on their review. So we could pass it to the transportation committee. I don't know if they would necessarily be able to help figure out a best way to improve the area, but we can ask that question.
Maybe refer, maybe send a letter to the transportation committee to consider the comments made by the public during this application, like something to kind of percolate that up to the top of the pile.
Correct. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
As opposed to having them read the, you know, the traffic study. I think, you know, they, if they're the ones that make recommendations on the improvements to the town board, it's like you want to make sure that they are getting the information that we received.
Right. Yeah, we could, I would like to do that. The other thing that, let's see, I had something else here. Oh yeah, things like the button, you know, the crosswalks, like some of, all those things that, the one thing is holding the developer's feet to the fire in terms of following through with drainage things and that sort of stuff. I mean, obviously we can't really put that in the tabling resolution.
Well, right. For the, the standards have changed over the decades from when Legacy was built to now what this is being proposed. So there's drastic improvements either in the town code, our design standards, or even the DEC standards. So they're following, after reviewing their plans, they are following the current DEC standards to help, you know- standards to help, you know, mitigate the stormwater runoff.
Yeah, the, the Legacy probably predates phase two.
Right.
Stormwater requirements, so.
I don't want to hold up, so if anybody has any other things, please bring them up.
Is that going to like Lopez to take a look at that and the landscaping consultant, all that stuff, right?
We, we can send, so we did send, we sent Terry Rice at Barton LaJudas, the traffic study. We've sent the landscaping to Bruce for his review. There's a little snafu getting the elevations, but we'll send those to Chris Lopez for his review.
Can we specifically ask Bruce to take a look at the southern, you know, the one lady talked about, any existing vegetation remaining versus all being replaced with new? If he could just potentially address that or take a look at that?
Yeah, like the sufficiency of the replanting or the buffering along this outside?
Yeah. Any other things that we need to put in this?
I mean, is everybody good with the, the way it looks and everything, basically? Are we going to leave?
I, personally, I am. I, I.
Yep.
I think it's a nice-looking structure. I thought it was an interesting comment from the one gentleman about, you know, as you're going over the hill on 441, are you going to be looking down? I don't think we're going to be looking. We're going to be looking at probably the third floor windows would be my guess. So won't be looking down on roofs. And that's frankly, an argument for the height.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Right? So, yeah, any other comments?
Good.
Somebody want to move to table?
I'll make the motion to table.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken? Aiken, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
Okay.
Before we move on.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, lead agency.
Declare lead agency, or intend to declare lead agency.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll move to request designation as lead agency for seeker for this application. Do we have a second?
I'll second. Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
Good catch. Thank you. You're welcome. Apollonia Lane. We can be patient.
I mean, if they call and make a meeting, we're willing to work with them as far as trying to get this resolved. It's just that these things have been two applications ago and haven't been.
Right.
Done. And we don't necessarily have a letter of credit because of being a single kind of house type of development.
Right.
If it was an overall subdivision development, we would have more money. But currently, I believe, I believe we only have for a top.
Yeah, because if I remember, they came in originally, we looked at that and thought, okay, you got one house and you want a dedicated road.
Right.
To the one house.
Right.
And it was, wow, you're building a road to town standards just for your house?
Right. Yeah, so. But yeah, we're willing to work with the applicant. We, you know, it's just, I think at this point, we, we really need to have the road looked at by DPW and we need to get that stormwater facility installed.
Exactly.
Right. Okay.
Just table it?
Table, and encourage.
Meeting with staff.
Meeting the, meeting with staff and talking about the unmet conditions.
Okay. Motion to table until meeting with staff is held to discuss unmet conditions.
Tiding's second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Canauer?
Canauer, aye.
Tiding.
Tiding's aye.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have for you guys.
Okay, maybe we can get out and see the Aurora Borealis. We will adjourn. Thanks everyone for coming.
We all said we won't.